Hey, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town of Babylon Zoning Board of Appeals. Please listen to the rules and procedures that will follow for tonight's meeting.
Good evening, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Town of Babylon Zoning Board of Appeals. The following is the procedure that will be followed tonight. The matters will be called in the order they appear on the calendar, with adjourned matters being called at the end of the regularly scheduled matters. Matters cannot be heard prior to their published scheduled time. When your matter is called, please submit the affidavit of posting to the secretary, and proceed to the podium and give your name and address. The chairperson will then swear you in, and read into the record information we have from your application, comments from various town departments, and any correspondence received on your application. The chairperson will then ask you to make whatever presentation you wish to make to the board. After you have made your presentation, the board will ask whatever questions the board deems appropriate, and then we will ask for comments from the public. If you wish to speak for or against an application, we ask that you wait until you're acknowledged, come forward, give us your name and address, tell us where your property is in relation to the property that's in question tonight, and then please direct your comments to the board, not the applicant or the applicant's representative. We have to keep a record, and we cannot do that if there are people talking over each other or cross-conversations. If someone has spoken for or against an application, and they have said exactly the same thing that you wish to say, it will have the same force and effect in the record if you give your name and address, are sworn in, and say that you join in those comments. If you have anything additional to say, please don't hesitate to do so, but keep in mind that you will be given only one opportunity to speak. After the public has spoken, the board may ask the applicant to come back to answer any questions that may have come up as a result of the public comment, or for the applicant to summarize. When the applicant comes back to answer any additional questions, if that happens, that does not start a second round of public comments. Once the matter has been heard, various things may occur. The board may decide the application immediately. It may reserve decision. If the board reserves decision, that does not mean the matter is approved or denied, it just means that the board needs more time to decide, may want to go out and look at the site again, or might want to review the documents and testimony further before making a decision. In either event, the applicant will receive the board's decision in writing shortly after the board makes its decision. If the application is approved, that does not mean that you can then go ahead and start construction, or whatever it is that you requested from the board. You will have to wait for the building permit to be obtained from the Building Department before you go ahead. On some occasions, the matter may be continued for another night. If it is continued, in most cases, it will be for the submission of documents, a new survey, new plans, or something of that nature. If that's the case, no one needs to come back on the new date. The documents will be submitted, and no further testimony will be taken. On rare occasions, a matter may be continued for future testimony. If that's the case, then people would have to come back to testify. If matters are adjourned at an open meeting on the scheduled date of hearing, no further notice need be given unless specifically required by the board on the date the adjournment is granted. Three rules that may affect your ability to proceed tonight. One, if the sign was not posted for 10 days, we cannot hold the hearing tonight. Two, if you commence this proceeding while you own the property but no longer own the property, and you are here now to continue with the application, you will need either the written consent of the new owner or the new owner to be present for the hearing. This situation could come about if you sold your house or building, money was held in escrow at closing for a certificate of occupancy or permit, and you're here tonight to clear that up. Lastly, if your application is a commercial application, and it's other than a renewal, and there is more than one tenant in the building, then you need your landlord to be here. Is there any applicant that has any difficulty with those situations and would need an adjournment tonight?
Is there anyone who would need an adjournment? Please rise and join the board in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First application tonight is application 25-002 of Brian M. and Emily Kelly, property located in West Babylon.
Hello, how are you?
How are you? Need your name and address for the record, please.
Emily and Brian Kelly, 188 Arnold Avenue, West Babylon, New York, 11704.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated January 27, 2025. Prior approval, case number 07438, January 24, 2008. Certificate of occupancy dated March 19, 2008. Biomedical control memo dated January 31, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by Adrian LaSala dated January 11, 2020. Tax map acting as an area map, and...
Chairman, there's five photographs and a site plan by Kurt Jacobs dated November 1, 2024.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Sure. Brian and I have been Town of Babylon residents our entire lives. Grew up in Lyndon Hurst, just moved to West Babylon a few years ago, so we didn't stray too far. We are building a dormer on the existing footprint of our house. We're growing our family and currently expanding. We love our neighborhood. We don't want to move to find a bigger house. We just want to kind of make space for the incoming children that are on their way.
Okay. All right, thank you. Turn the hearing over to Mr. Shepherd.
Good evening, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And how many bedrooms will we be, will be in this when it's finished?
It's the same footprint. So it's technically, it's four bedrooms.
It'll be four bedrooms?
Yeah, three upstairs and then one on the lower level.
Two baths?
Yes.
One kitchen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you agree that you won't close the front portico?
Correct.
And also, I'm here to remind you that you have an open plumbing permit.
Oh, we didn't know that.
Happens. I had one myself.
Okay.
You'll need to close that out before you can get a CL.
Okay.
Just so that you're aware. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve application 25-002 with the condition that the front portico not be further enclosed.
All in favor? Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Next application is application 25-001, Gary and Kimberly McAllister and Shade Turner, property located in Wheatley Heights. Name and address for the record, please.
Kimberly McAllister.
Address?
Address is 10 Willow Street, Wheatley Heights, New York, 11798.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, I have a planning division memo dated January 27, 2025. Biomedical control memo dated January 31, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by Michael Scalise dated January 19, 2018. Tax map acting as an area map, and...
The chairman, there's four photographs and a site plan by Todd O'Connell dated November 25, 2024.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Okay, we've been residents of Wheatley Heights over 10 years, actually 13 years. And throughout that time, you know, we have family coming over, and you know, our space is pretty small in the living room and the kitchen, so Thanksgiving is pretty hectic as the family grows. So we're looking to hopefully extend, so this way we can have a happy Thanksgiving. And so that's our reason for applying for the permit.
Okay, so you're going directly behind the existing house, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and I guess the question is too, why so big? Why is this, you know, because it increases the building area by a lot, you know? So what's the need for the, to be that big, the extension?
Your honor.
Thanks.
Well, I'm a grandmother. I have about 10, 12 grandchildren. And so when we get together, we get together, and then we have extended family also. We want to make sure that there's enough room for everyone.
So you're just going straight back from nothing outside, you're straight back?
Yes.
Do you realize that the cellar entrance would need to be removed?
Yes.
You know that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. We good? Oh yeah, you're gonna have to remove the bathroom downstairs?
That's correct.
You know all of that, okay?
Yes.
The walls of the bathroom, all of that, okay. You do know, okay. All right. I'll make a motion then to approve application 25-001 with a condition on the face of the CO, that the, yeah, the outside cellar entrance must be removed prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay, unless you've got nothing else to do for the rest of the night. Next application is application 24-255 of Michael Halpern and Jasmine Hef, property located in West Babylon. Name and address for the record?
Matthew Bush, 2615 Union Boulevard, Islet, New York, architect on behalf of the homeowner.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated January 27, 2025. Biomedical control memo dated January 31, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. A survey by Ralph Lewis dated October 7, 2024. Tax map acting as an area map, and...
Chairman, there's four photographs and a site plan by Matthew Bush dated November 25, 2024.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Yes, so we're here for four variances diminishing front yard to 9.1 feet, side yard on the north side from eight feet to 7.4, and then total side yards from 30 to 20.2, as well as increased building coverage to 60.9%. The building coverage is mainly related to a pool that was constructed in 2021. The house itself, similar to the neighboring houses on the block, in terms of typology, the only real difference being the front porch that we're here for tonight. The other houses have a similar front yard in relation to the face of the house, around 14 or 15 feet. They do have front stoops and steps, none of them to the extent that we have on the subject property. But that's, that is what we're here for tonight.
Okay, I'll turn the hearing over to Mr. Shepherd.
How are you?
Good.
So, when was the front deck built?
From what I can tell, and I have some aerial photos, it looks to me around 2004. They did not own the property at that time. They've had the property since 2019. I have recent, or I have aerial photos dating back to 2001, if you'd like me to submit those.
If you'd like to.
I mean, you can sort of make out what was, what looks to be a similar footprint that was constructed around 2004, and then the deck in its current form, you could see pretty clearly in 2010.
And the pool was put in in '21?
Yeah, 2021.
We've got a lot of build now and ask later here, don't we?
That appears to be what it is. They did hire a pool contractor to take on the permitting and construct the pool. They filed permits and received the denial. Unfortunately, the homeowners are not really privy to the process, and the pool was built...
So they weren't aware that they were denied?
I don't know the specifics. I wasn't involved at that point in time, but they had contracted with the pool contractor to do this.
So what brings you here tonight? What's the, what, are we selling, or are we renting?
They are selling. The house has been transacted a few times, and the, without the front deck coming up, the pool seems to be what was the driving factor in terms of bringing these non-compiances to light.
You know how it is, when you peek behind the curtain, you see all kinds of things, right?
Yes, sir.
So what, can we cut back the front deck at all?
Um...
In line with the, as you see on the comments, in line with the north, north side yard setback?
So the six or eight inches that would be, to bring it to eight feet instead of the 7.4?
Don't have the, yeah. Can it be cut back at all?
I mean, we'd prefer not to if that's, if it's the condition that, that is gonna, you know, bring us to approval, I think we can discuss it with the homeowners.
Well, before we talk about approval, let's say, would you agree that the front deck not be further enclosed?
Yes.
Would you agree that the side deck not be enclosed?
Yes.
And no further expansion of any decks of patios?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. You looked a little reluctant there.
They got a plumbing permit open too.
Yeah, and you got a plumbing permit too.
That is what I see. So, yes, we're, we have an expediter working on the permit side of it, so we're in the process.
Is that for the house or the pool, or you don't know?
It's for, for the, maintaining the pool and maintaining the deck, and she will also be handling the plumbing permit if that's open.
You agreed not no further expansions?
No, to cut, to cut some back. Yeah.
Oh, how about the back, the back deck? Can we cut that back at all?
There's not much of a landing off of it. I think that one would be a little more difficult to, to modify.
Can we do anything with the backyard? Again, the whole thing is just, the whole backyard is all cement, patio, brick, whatever you want to call it.
The, so are you referring to the deck that's directly off the, the back of the house, not the side of the house? I mean, that one, that one would be harder to cut back, because we'd still need a way to get out of the door.
Work with me here, do something, huh?
Could we do anything with drainage if we, you know, if we were to get a drywall in here somewhere to kind of alleviate some of the coverage?
We're over by a lot, 3,732 square feet, sixty, almost 61%. I don't mean to give you a hard time, but you know, every left, right, front, back, and center, and up, you're, none of this has been, you know, was legalized.
Yep, I understand. The deck on the south side, I mean, it steps down lower to grade, and maybe that's something that's easier to, you know, to modify from a constructability standpoint.
How about some of the patio? How about some of the patio brick, I mean?
Around the pool.
Around the pool? Is there a target number where we could get down to, to, to bring this to something that was satisfactory?
Lower.
But yeah, I'm thinking...
Yeah.
So if we can, if we can remove some of the...
Would you get to 50%?
I mean, we can, we can target that. If it's 55, that's probably a little bit easier. We do need to maintain the fence around the pool.
Yeah, well, you asked us.
Yeah, you can have the fence. You can put, put the fence wherever you want. You know, you got, like I said, you're...
So if we get to 50, how many, how many square feet would that be?
You'd have to calculate that.
Instead of doing this here, why don't we just, you know, close the hearing and reserve decision, and you can get back to us with a new survey showing what you're going to cut back and how you're going to get to 50%.
Okay, all right. 50% should be our target number?
Yeah, that's good. And you agreed to the three conditions?
Yes.
You're not enclosing anything further, no backs, no, no...
Yes.
As the chairman, I have a question. What about the area right over here? Have you seen the, can you remove that small area there? Deck?
We could. The deck itself is not in the best shape, and if we're gonna cut it back the eight inches, we may want to cut it back to the house.
Yeah, that, that would help you a lot.
Yeah.
Think about that option as well.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. We're gonna close the hearing, gonna reserve decision, we'll keep the record open for a new survey from you showing, you know, lowering of the lack coverage.
All right, thank you.
Next application is application 24-262 of Joseph Consalvo and Tay Yu, property located in West Babylon. Name and address for the record, please.
It's Michael Larrato, 245 Route 109, Suite D, West Babylon, New York. I'm here representing the homeowners. So we're here today seeking relief for...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Oh, that's right.
Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and let me read this stuff into the record. For the record, a planning division memo dated January 27, 2025. A survey by Area Land Surveying dated May 8, 2024. Tax map acting as an area map. Biomedical control memo dated January 31, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact, and...
Chairman, there's 24 photographs, a site plan by Tom D. Riley, and a site plan dated September 12, 2024.
Okay, now, would you like to tell us about the application?
All right, so we're here today seeking relief for a front yard setback from 30 feet to 27.6. The owners, the owners built an enclosed front vestibule, and in doing so, the setback was cut down from 31.5 to 27.6. The structure was built sometime around the winter of 2023. The house is owner occupied. I know that was one of the questions in the, in the letter. And they do intend to try to legalize this house for an accessory apartment, once the permits are issued. In addition, we're seeking relief for the rear yard setback from 40 feet to 29.8. The house appears to have had this covering on the rear deck since sometime around like 2000, 2001. That's what I was able to locate through the GIS aerials. But I did find that they had a CO for a deck sometime around 1980. That was CO number 2434. The deck is covered and is used for pretty much just recreation purposes, you know, barbecues, dinners, things like that, when they want to just entertain outside. So I know that was another question that you had mentioned as to why they needed this. They have no intentions of enclosing this structure any further. With regards to the shed, the 18-point, sorry, 18 by 7.9, that is a setback of 3.2 or eight feet is required. They are willing and willing to relocate this so it conforms to the proper setbacks. In conclusion, we don't feel that these structures would impose any negative impact on the environment or to any of the neighboring properties.
Okay, thank you. Turn the hearing over to Mr. Shepherd.
What's, how are you? What's the purpose of the glass enclosure in the front of the house?
They just use it just for, to keep coverage. Like, I don't know why they did it. They just said that they'd built it and that's what they wanted. It's just covering as they go into the house, but they're...
It's like a dentist's office.
I know, we, we didn't know.
Oh.
I have pictures, you want to see it?
And there's gonna be, just go over, how many bedrooms, how many baths, how many kitchens?
Uh, one sec.
Just for the record.
So for the first floor, there are two bedrooms, and there's one bathroom down there. Second floor, there is two bedrooms, living room, and then like a kitchen dining room, and then that leads out to the deck.
Right now, there's one kitchen or two?
One in my drawings. I know they plan on doing an apartment there. I don't know if they installed something there while I wasn't there.
So we're up to four bedrooms?
Four, there's two downstairs and two upstairs. And, and when they do the apartment, they plan on keeping the two downstairs as well. I have calculations for that, this, when the downstairs is done, it'll be 687 square feet for the accessory apartment. You want to see the layout of the house?
Uh, we have it.
Oh, okay, okay.
I just want you to let us know. So you got two kitchens, two baths, four bedrooms total. Two and two and one and one, one kitchen. We're not renting, it's gonna be owner occupied?
Owner occupied, yes.
Okay.
They've been there since, I think it was 2016 they purchased this house?
And we got three sheds in the backyard currently?
Yeah, so the lower lot, they have no garage or anything and no basement, so they just use it for storage. And they, they will, they will pull that other one off the property line to eight feet. I already spoke to them about that.
So you will put them in a conforming location?
Yeah, that's the only one that's not conforming.
Number four. Area's number four, but it's shed number two.
Yeah, I think it's shed number three on your list.
All right, so we're gonna put the shed in a conforming location.
Yeah, we're not gonna enclose the deck any further.
Yeah, no, no enclosing the deck, upper, upper deck, lower deck?
No.
Below or above, no expansion, outside stairways?
No, they don't need them.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This picture over here, the front door, when you enter, are there two doors that goes to the first floor and the second floor?
Leads to the main, that's the second level, and then there's a staircase that leads down to the first. Hang on one second.
Side, there's a side where on the lower level, one on the back.
On the south side on the left?
Yeah, over on the side where there's another...
You have a fence.
Yeah, I'll show you the... Yeah, I'll show you the.
The green?
Well, that was just.
That's the entrance? Can we do anything about this? This really looks like it's a doctor's office, this glass enclosure.
You want them to remove it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it cost them a pretty penny, but. Kind of offensive in a residential neighborhood.
Completely against it. I'll tell them I'll tell them they have to remove it or open it up so there's no maybe front, front glass, just keep the side, or you just want it completely out?
Well, one of the things we usually ask for is that you don't further enclose the portico, and you're coming to us with an enclosed portico.
Yeah, I didn't really bring it up. I just brought up about the, you know, the shed and not enclosing anymore the coverings anymore. I didn't mention anything about the front because it wasn't mentioned in the letter.
I think we'd like to see it removed.
Opened up? So just take the front door off?
Well, the front petition would be nice. It still looks like a, you know, I. You had a whole front.
Okay.
Take it down. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. We're going to close the hearing. We're going to reserve decision. You get the decision in the mail.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Next application is application 24-263 of 1398 Acorn Street LLC, property located in Copec. Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Janusz Kanixman, living 103 Joselson Avenue, Bayshor, New York.
And do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated January 30, 2025. Survey by Michael Scholies dated November 16, 2016. Tax map acting as an area map. Environmental control memo dated January 31, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. Fire marshals report dated February 6, 2025. Location is. Good condition, comply, complete forms and emergency contact form. Not exactly sure what that is. Was the fire marshal was there?
I guess so. I was in there.
There's something that you need to follow up with the fire marshal on here as far as completing the forms and the emergency contact form.
Okay.
Okay, you'll have to get in contact with him. Okay.
For the record, we have Southern County Planning Memo dated February 6, 2025. It's a matter of local determination.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about the application?
Mr. Chairman, there's six photographs. That's okay.
Would you like to tell us about the application? Why are you, why are you here?
Oh, I I just to renew my permit to operate the public garage.
Turn the hearing over to Mr. Delavecchia.
Good evening, how are you?
Yes, I'm good.
You are aware that you do not have an outside storage permit, correct?
Yes, correct.
Last week, when there was a drive-by, there was outside storage, there were trucks parked.
Yeah, I just cleaned out everything. I have the picture to prove it. I just cleaned everything during the three days, so everything is clean all around building and everything. That's the picture I took it.
Can you submit that?
Yes. That's the picture I have.
Okay. Going forward, it has to stay that way? Not just when we show up and see it?
Yes.
And then tell you you have to clean it? You know, it should be like that on a daily basis.
Yes, I understand that, but, you know.
Just wanted to make sure that you understand. Besides that, everything is operating the same as it was last year?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. Yeah. So before we can move your application, you're going to need to get in touch with the fire marshal.
Okay.
And see what you need, what form you need, or what needs to be completed paperwork-wise before we can move your application.
Okay, and I have to submit it to Town of Babylon, right?
The the fire marshal will submit his report to the zoning board office. We'll get the the paperwork when that is done, but you need to get that done, so call the fire marshal.
It's supposed to be attached. Okay, okay, thank you. And it's possible to get like for two years, permit extended or no? If if.
We'll consider that when we get the fire marshal's report.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next application. Say it again, I'm sorry. Next application is application 25-004, Broadway Tire Inc., property located in Amityville.
Good evening. My name is Sal Hanna. I live at 1991 Marion Drive, East Meadow, New York.
Okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated January 30, 2025. Survey by Thomas Mattarazzo dated December 2, 2021. Tax map acting as an area map. Department of Environmental Control memo dated January 31, 2025. Talks about breeding area for standing water with the tires and stuff like that, something you need to be cognizant of. Fire marshals report dated February 6, 2025. Fire marshal has no objections. End.
Chairman, there's five photographs.
And for the record, we have a memo of Southern County Planning as a matter of local determination dated February 6, 2025.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Just here for a renewal of, for a public garage for an auto repair and outdoor storage for tires. And everything has been the same. And I haven't changed anything. I try to keep the front clean. It's pretty tough. And that's about it.
Turn the hearing over to Mr. Perotti.
Good evening, how you doing?
How you doing?
I did drive by. It was relatively clean. You did a good job. Do have a few questions. Since the last time you were here, have the trailer container and the legal signage been resolved?
I'm sorry, the what?
The trailer and the legal signage been resolved? Did you remove them or did you get a permit?
The legal sign?
Illegal signage, the signs.
Okay, so there was, I did a facelift on the sign, you know, I made it look nicer. There was signage that was posted under that that was removed three years ago.
So it was all taken care of then?
Yeah, it's only the four by eight. Everything that was on the bottom is completely gone.
And what about the trailer, the container that was removed, or did you get a permit for it?
There was a shed, I'm assuming that you're talking about next to the dumpster. That's removed.
That's removed.
Yeah, that was removed three years ago.
All right, so also, since your last renewal, you never handed in the certificate of occupants.
So, you know, it's kind of funny because I've been doing this for years, like many years. You guys probably know me. And every single time, this is new to me, that I'm done with this meeting, I was done. I never knew I had to do anything else. And I've, all these years I've been doing this, and this is new to me. When I went for the renewal, I didn't even know it was expired. Even last time, I never got any letters. I was like, I follow up, I dream about you guys every three years. I'm like, oh, God. It's like, let's go, let's do it again. So I didn't even know. All those years, every time this meeting was approved, I just went about my day. I didn't know I had to come back or hand in any paperwork.
We're going to need that.
You're going to, you need an inspection.
Uh, like, what what kind of inspection? Do they usually do that?
Yes.
So once I get their approval.
Then you get the inspection.
I have to come back, get an inspection?
You don't have to come back now.
You don't have to come back.
When you get approved on this, we're already going to forward it to the building department, and then you'll need a certain inspection with that.
So I never had to do that before, and I've been doing this for years. This is probably like my fifth time doing this. I've never, ever once.
We're going to have to do it now, though.
Last time, but all the other times, I just, everything was approved, everything was done.
Okay, so that's what you need to do.
All right, yeah, so I guess once it's done, I got to come back here and make an appointment.
You don't got to come back at all.
You don't have to come back here.
Okay. All right, and that's it, okay. Appreciate it. Can I get five years this time? Many years I've been asking. And I always come, and I I don't get letters when when these things expire. I try to stay on top of my stuff. You guys are pretty good with me. I like the town of Babylon. I have no issues. Five years would be great.
Still have a few more questions. So since your last renewal, you're, it was never closed out. Did you know?
I know. I tried to get a refund from all the money I spent, but that didn't happen either. I didn't know. I had no idea. I had to come back and get an inspection.
Okay.
Since, I guess, what, '05? I've been doing it for a long time, so this was new.
So then going forward, you'll, now you know, correct? All right, good, good.
Yeah.
Also, you had mentioned everything's operating the same, correct?
The same.
All right. Also, another question is, do you agree to the prior the prior covenant restrictions and also the used tire storage limited to 50 tires at the maximum height of five stack, five feet?
Yeah, I have pickup every Friday for disposal, and all the other tires you see are constantly in and out.
Okay, but you agree to just keep them at five feet, though?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And all my neighbors are good around me. Nobody has issues. I've been there my whole life.
I did see them. There were a few that was a little higher, but just as long as you know.
I got you.
Okay, thank you. I do not have any more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Five years. Be nice, five years, five years. Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application 25-004 with all the prior covenant restrictions and the, and the conditions, used tire storage limited to 50 tires at maximum five feet, and also approved for four years.
I'll take it. All in favor?
All right. I'll see you on Monday. Okay, all right. Thank you, guys.
All right, guys.
Enjoy your night.
Thank you.
You get that done quick, and maybe we'll talk about it next time for five years.
I'm quick, I'm going to Arizona next week.
Next application is application 24-261 of Entrust Auto Motor Services LP, Novak Motors, property located in East Flumadeale. Name an address for the record.
Good evening. Yulia Viola from Sir Tillman Ballen, 100 Motoparkway, Hapug, New York.
Okay, for the record, we have a planning division memo dated January 30, 2025, environmental control memo dated January 31, 2025. Just talks about storage of fluids, okay. Fire marshals report dated February 6, 2025, no violations. Survey by Thomas Brenham dated June 15, 2021, tax map acting as an area map. End.
Chairman, there's four photographs.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the application?
So as part of this application, the applicant is seeking to renew a special exception permit to operate the public garage for storage and sales of vehicles. In November of last year, Zoning Board of Appeals approved the special exception permit and associated variances. The applicant has been working with the building department to obtain the sign-off pertaining to prior Zoning Board of Appeals approval, and we hope to complete the process with the building department in the next few months. Granted of the applicant's request, to renew the special exception permit will not prevent the reasonable use of the adjacent properties or legally established uses and will not adversely affect the safety, health, or welfare of the town. And the approval for more than one year would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, so the alterations and everything are done now, and you're working to get the certificate of occupancy?
So, yes, the alterations are completed, and I think the expediter, based upon my conversations with him, he said that the only thing that's outstanding are inspections, final inspections.
You guys are a little late, not crazy late, but a little late. It was due June 8, '24. Six months.
Yes. So we have been, we have been trying to close out all of the outstanding things, so, and expediter has been actively working on that, but.
All right, so we'll take that into consideration next time, right, that you'll be here on time?
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve application 24-261 for a period of two years. All in favor? Would all, yeah, would all be imposed with? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You have another one, I'm assuming so?
Yes.
And use your name for the record again, please.
Yulia Viola, Sir Tillman Ballen, 100 Motoparkway, Hapug, New York.
This is for application 24-260. There's a planning memo dated January 30, 2025. Environmental control memo dated January 31, 2025. If approved, this application will not result in significant impact. Fire marshals report dated February 6, 2025, no violations. Tax map acting as an area map. And a survey by Richard Movac, Movec, dated, last dated 11/18/16. End.
Chairman, there's five photographs and a site plan by Richard Escant dated January 9, 2023.
Would you like to tell us about this application?
Similarly to the prior application, this application is to renew a special exception permit to operate the public garage with storage and sales of vehicles. The applicant also has been working with the building department to obtain either sign-off or certificate of occupancy pertaining to the prior Zoning Board of Appeals approval. As part of the prior site plan, we were legalizing the existing conditions, so I don't believe we need any site work to be performed on the site, and we hope to complete the process with the building department in the very near future. The applicant retains the expediter to pursue the building department process, and similarly to prior application, any approval for more than one year would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, so this is the same situation, you're working with the building department to get everything straightened out, to get your CO?
Yes, I think there was a confusion with the building department. They initially thought that we needed interior alterations on the second floor, but if you look at the Zoning Board of Appeals approval and the recorded covenants and restrictions, we withdrew that applica, we withdrew that application in 2020, and we agreed not to do any alterations to the second floor, and we agreed not to convert the second floor into the office space. Second floor will be used only for mechanical, as a mechanical area.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. I'll make a motion to approve application 24-260 for a period of two years. Second. Yeah. So, oh, yeah, so this would be subject to the previously imposed conditions and CNRs for a public garage. So, oh yeah, so this will be subject to the previously imposed conditions and C N Rs for a public garage. Second floor shall remain unoccupied with only access for service areas such as a sprinkler or mechanical maintenance. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, have a good day.
Next application is application twenty-four-two-fifty-three of Neela. And. Mia? Last name Mia, Mihai?
Mihai.
Mihai, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nellia Mihai, and I'm residing right now at seven-six-six Noel Street, Lyndon Hurst, New York, and the property we are here for is eight-seven Street Catskill Avenue, Lyndon Hurst, eleven-seven-five-seven.
Okay, and do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated January second, two thousand and twenty-five. Environmental control memo dated January third, two thousand and twenty-five. One of the recommendations is that the house be limited to single-family use only. There's gonna be a basement in this house?
Yes.
And. Do we submit test borings? Looks like there could be a problem with the groundwater?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
Yes.
Oh, I need you to name an address.
My name is Lawrence Montero, I'm a family friend and a builder.
Okay, I just need an address, that's fine.
One sixty-six Willip Street, Williston Park, New York, one, one-one-five-nine-six.
Okay, and do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
We have a survey by Anastasia, oh, Parsons, dated April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, tax map acting as an area map, and.
Chairman, there's five photographs on the site plan by Eric Kofflerberg, dated September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, would you like to tell us about the application?
Yes, we are a young family, we have one child right now, and we are planning to build a two-and-a-half-story, single-family dwelling. We are planning to have another child soon, probably by the time the house is ready and completed, we will have two children. It's gonna be me and my husband, and also we are planning to have our grandma living with us. That's why we are requesting the variances for all of this, to make sure that everybody has a known space and a room.
Thank you, turn the hearing over to Mr. Rigney.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you, how are you?
So, when did you guys start clearing the property of all the brush and start construction here?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
When did you guys start clearing the property? I noticed it was very overgrown, it wasn't always like this. You guys started clearing the property?
Yes, just recently, yeah, I feel like during the fall of two thousand and twenty-four, we started doing this.
Now, the plan is to what, demo this house completely and build a new home?
Yes, correct.
Okay, did you read the planning comments?
Yes.
Planning is recommending that you redesign the house to conform to the rear yard and the side yards?
Yes, we read all the comments, but still, we are asking if there's any way, if you can, could follow through all of the seven points to make sure that we meet the needs of everybody who's gonna live with us. I have my grandma who is battling cancer, and we want a separate room for her as well. So, we want this house, specifically this size, to make sure that everybody has a known space there. And also, we are from Ukraine, and we have family visiting us often, and obviously, it's gonna be a place for them to stay for a couple weeks if they are visiting the United States, so we really wanna make sure that everybody has enough space.
I understand that, but since you're building a brand-new home, you pretty much have a good opportunity to, to make this conform. It's not something that you, you know, working with that's pre-existing, this is something that you're gonna be designing. It's in your favor to do as planning is requesting that you make this conform.
Her, her, sorry, can I? So her request is that if we can build the square footage and whatever side yard, front yard, we'll adjust based on your comments.
Yes, we want you to conform to the side yard setback and the rear yard setback. That's what they're recommending.
So, so you need the side yard, you're gonna give us the number, what to?
Side yards are thirty feet, and the rear yard is forty feet. North side setback is twelve.
So it has to be twelve, so then we'd have to shift the house? From eight-point-nine, that's what it's showing now, right?
Right.
Without changing the square foot of the house, or it's going to get affected?
Yeah, just, just shift it over off the, off the property line and.
Okay, that's fine, that means we'll shift it and then send you a new survey.
Correct.
Perfect. The house, right? Okay, then we'll get back to the architect and see how to fit in there and get back to you all with the new set of plans?
They have, like I said, planning has no issues with variances one, two, and three, it's just four, five, and six.
Okay, so the, okay, so we need to take care of the four, five, and six?
Redesign the plans for us, and, and, you know, resubmit it, and we'll take it from there.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
As far as the basement goes, though, you know, it has to be unfinished based off of the information that we're getting from D E C with the water table. It's gonna be an issue.
Okay, so it's gonna be an issue, you say?
It's gonna be an issue to have a finished basement down there.
It would be just a storage space, hundred percent.
Yeah, it's just a storage.
So, uninhabitable space down there.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Sure.
Correct.
Now, this is gonna be a single-family owner-occupied home too, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you see the covenants and restrictions in the planning memo?
Yes. Yes.
Would you agree to all those?
Yes.
If this was approved?
Yes.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, I got no further questions.
Any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to be heard on this application? For the record, there are none. Okay, so we're gonna close the hearing, we're gonna reserve decision, we'll keep the record open for new plans, showing, you know, what we just talked about, and then we'll make a decision on your application.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks, thanks, good luck.
Thank you.
This ends the live streaming portion of our meeting.